Hi, I'm Dr. Renee Turchi, Plymouth-White Marsh High School distinguished graduate and pediatrician at St. Christopher's Hospital for Children, and you're watching CITV.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the public business meeting of the Colonial School District Board of Directors. I'd like to start off our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
So I'd like to announce that the board met an executive session on Monday, June 11th. We discussed a special education issue and the superintendent's evaluation. The meeting lasted about an hour. The board also met an executive session this evening prior to the meeting. We discussed this evening's personnel action, confidential special education agreements, and the superintendent's evaluation. Before we start the meeting, I just wanted to say a big thank you to the entire Colonial team for a outstanding commencement ceremony. It was excellent. It was run top-notch quality. The crew, everybody did an outstanding job. The teachers did outstanding, and it was a beautiful evening weather-wise. So I'd like to say a big thank you and acknowledge all the hard work to pull that off, and good luck to all the recent graduates from 2018. So we go right into student recognitions. Mike?
Thank you. Tonight, we have our indoor color guard here. I believe Ms. Amber Franco is here to introduce our students, so that they can receive recognition for their wonderful accomplishments this year. I have a list of them, but I think Amber's going to go through all of their successes, so we're really happy to have them here this evening.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Amber Franco. I'm one of the color guard instructors here off and on for the last 10 years. I'm here because, well, I've been on staff, but also our instructor, Bobby Biddle, he is the director. He had a scheduled vacation this week, and he sends his love. This year, our unit was comprised of 16 members. We won the gold medal, champion of the Mid-Atlantic Indoor Network Color Guard Scholastic Local A Division that took place on April 21st, winning with a score of 84.51. The under-color guard also won four out of the five competitions, what we completed in our season. They also attended shows at Council Rock High School South, South Brunswick High School twice, Monroe Township High School, and Upper Dublin High School as well. Our championships consisted of 90 units competing in various divisions coming from all over the Mid-Atlantic region. We rehearsed every Tuesday and Thursday from the beginning of December until the end of April, along with a few Saturdays as well. Our director, Bobby Biddle, represents Plymouth-White Marsh as an elected member of the Executive Board for the Mid-Atlantic Indoor Network, which is an awesome accomplishment. And we are incredibly proud to represent the school district and hope that our many years of excellence have made you proud as well. So I believe I have certificates here for those of the members who were able to attend this evening. So I have Franklin Ashton, and Samara Knard, and Jenna Fitzpatrick, Carmen Gamble, Autumn Laurie, Caitlin Matei, Madeline McFlure, Hailey, and Emily Wilson. And then I would also like everyone to know that we do have two other staff members. We have Sammy Kessler and Lexie Ashton, who happen to be alumni.
succeed. Moving forward, we have approval of meeting minutes. We have curriculum committee meeting from 5:14, the FMT committee meeting from 5:14, board business meeting from 5:17, policy committee meeting from 6:04, and finance committee meeting from 6:04. I make that approval in a motion. May I have a second? A second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays, ayes, have it. Financial reports. So we have approval of the financial reports. We have capital reserve fund from May 2018, food service bills cafeteria report from May 2018, outstanding investment report from May 2018, cash flow summary from May 2018, comparison of taxes collected from May 2018, real estate tax escrow report from May 2018, trust fund report, May 2018, and reconciliation of cash accounts, May 2018, budgetary deficit status report, May 2018, bond report from May 2018, general fund program bills, May 2018, budget transfers from May 2018. Does anyone make that in a motion? May I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, ayes, have it. Treasurers' report. I'll hand that over to Dave.
Can I jump in real quick?
Right.
On L, under financial reports, does everybody have a little lock next to their...what does that mean, Mr. Bogley? Do you know?
I don't see any.
Okay.
I have a lock on mine.
I do too.
So I'm just wondering if there's a file in there that...
I think if you look at the...I think there's a file under approval of financial reports, item A.
There are lots of files there, but when you click on L, nothing shows.
It's good.
Yeah, there's a lock there.
But the corresponding file is here. It's under A, the file that corresponds to item L.
All of them.
All of them, yeah.
There's got to be a reason why there's a lock there, though. If we could find that out, that would be great. Sorry, I just wanted to ask that why while I was thinking of it.
No, no worries. We're getting acclimated to board docs, and these are the kind of questions that may pop up every so often. At least you weren't locked out.
The treasurer's report for May 18 is attached, and it is submitted for approval.
All right. Make a motion to approve the treasurer's report?
Send it.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, ayes, have it. All right, moving forward. Public comment on protocols, on agenda. Any public comments tonight?
(inaudible)
Oh, I'm sorry.
My name's Robert Franz. Wildflower Drive, Plymouth Meeting. It's been a little while since I've been able to get to a meeting, so I've been looking at the budget, going back a few years. 2014 to 2015, budget of $107 million. You spent $100 million, 2.6% tax increase. 2015 to 2016, budget of $112 million. You spent $107 million, 2% tax increase. So you spent less than...it was budgeted, very good. 2016 to 2017, budget of $118 million. You spent $118 million with a 2.2% tax increase. 2017 to 2018, $124 million. You spent $124 million, a 2.1% tax increase. You showed a budget reserve of $500,000, which is pretty tight. But then you go down to cash and investments. $50 million, of which $27 million was the capital fund, but you had $20 million in the general fund. 2018 to 2019 budget, you're showing projected $125 million spent, a 2.4% tax increase, a reserve of $763,000. But if you drop down to the bottom to see cash and investments, you've got $42 million on hand, and $37 million is in the general fund. There's $400,000 in the capital fund. Now, it's been very interesting, because the Philadelphia Inquirer has targeted or has shown that Colonial School District is sitting on quite a pile of money that they're not spending. So you've got $37 million, and you're projecting for June of 2019 about having that amount of money on hand. Yet you're still showing a 2.4% tax increase. Now, I know you've got a 2.5% cap before you have to go to the voters, but that shouldn't be looked upon as a goal to raise taxes up to that amount. What's going on with the big pile of money you're sitting on? That's the question I have.
There's a good question, and the consideration of raising taxes, I'll start with that one right off from the board. We live in this community. We're raising our families. We've lived here a long time. Raising taxes is not, well, a goal. It is a necessity in today's world with the increasing cost that we're challenged to match and pay for. So it is not something that we take lightly. This board gave it a lot of consideration before going there. I do know that Dr. Christian and Dave Sobrowski have worked extremely hard to trim the budget and to make it work for us within these limits. So I'm going to point that out first. As for the numbers that you just...I don't have them in front of me, but I'll let Dave speak to some of those concerns.
Well, the projection for our general fund balance as of the end of this year is going to be around $20 million. That is about two, two-and-a-half months' worth of our budget, if that would be our emergency fund. There is a committed fund balance for future Peasars increases. There is a committed fund balance for healthcare contingency. This board did move to transfer $6 million of that fund balance earlier this year to the Capital Projects Fund to complete the Plymouth-White Marsh High School renovations. So we are using our fund balance. The budget we are proposing tonight shows that even with the tax increase, we are still going to be using a little over half a million dollars of fund balance to balance this year, or next year's budget.
But of that $37 million, or that $40 million, you've maybe counted for, what, $10 million of it? You know, I mean, you're looking at...I mean, I'll give you a good... 2017, 2018, $124 million. 2018, 2019, $125 million. That's a pretty tight...you know, I'll give you credit for that. But I'm still seeing a lot of money sitting around. And, you know, I don't have children in school, never had, but I pay quite a bit of property taxes each year to the school district. And I want to see the money used very tightly. And generally, the school district has done that, but now I'm seeing that we're sitting on a lot of money of cash, you know, a lot of money on cash. And, you know, when you see the Inquirer bring that up as one of the two school districts in Montgomery County that is sitting on big piles of cash and asking why, I come here and ask why also.
Now, we appreciate your questions, and so what we can do is, we've had multiple presentations, and we'll share them with you. In fact, if you want, we can get your email, and we can give you the reports. It gives you a very good drill down on where the money is actually being allocated for. And I have to respectfully disagree, but it's not a big pot of money. I wish we had more, but we have to work with what we have. And we have allotted to some extending liabilities, future liabilities, right now. So can we do that for you? Can we get you the information?
Yeah, I would appreciate that. I mean, I...
There's further discussion.
$125 million spending on the year for the budget, and you're sitting with $37 million.
Don't believe...
Sitting there, you know, and some of that's going to be gone, but that's the same amount of money. Very few people have that big of a rainy day fund.
We can definitely get you the answers you need, and we can hopefully clarify some of the reasons that we have to do what we have to do.
Yeah, you may not remember me or know me from back in the past, but I was on the two budget committees before the Act I and that, so I'm quite familiar with...
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Linda Dahl, White Marsh Township. I would like to comment on Agenda Item Number Seven, Public Comment Protocols, which is kind of crazy the way that was written. I have no idea what this is referring to, nor will any of the public until it is explained when the school board meeting gets to that point in the agenda, which is too late as far as the public is concerned if this is a school board voting item. Currently, public comment is allowed before the new business agenda item begins and after the meeting has been completed. This makes absolutely no sense. If you are truly a school board that wants to hear from its parents, students, teachers, and taxpayers, we should be able to speak before a vote is taken on anything that affects our students, our property, and our taxes. By that statement, I mean that after each individual agenda item that requires a vote is introduced, explained, and the school board members and the administration have all stated their concerns and their opinions, then the item should be open to public comment right before the vote is taken. How can this board understand how the public feels if you don't give us a chance to speak right before a vote is taken? Asking the public to comment on agenda items prior to the explanation of those items means that we have no idea what will be presented. This is totally unfair to the Colonial School District community. And then to offer public comment at the end of the meeting regarding agenda items that have already been voted on, have been decided, is basically stating that you never wanted to hear from the Colonial School District community because you know best. I recommend that the whole procedure of public comment be amended to allow for public comment after each agenda item that will require a school board vote. And I further state that the only reason to oppose this suggestion would be that you don't want to hear from the diverse Colonial School District community because you have already made your decision, and we don't matter. Now, since I have no idea what this item is referring to, I can only hope that this school board has come to the same common sense conclusion that each voting agenda item should allow public comment before the vote is taken. Do what is right, not what is easy. Thank you.
Can I just ask a question, because I'm a little confused. We obviously love to hear comments from any member of the public who wants to come and speak at the appropriate times on the agenda, but has there been any change here whatsoever in any of the protocol for public comment? I'm a little confused, because I didn't think we were making any sort of change. I think this is just sort of the standard protocol that we've always had. I don't know when it was instituted, but before my time on the board, and I didn't see this as any kind of change.
No, I think...I won't speak for you, Linda, but I believe you're asking for public comment on each agenda item before it's voted on?
Correct. And it's that...Adam, you're correct. It has been done this way all the time. I'm asking for a change.
You're asking?
Yes. And because I didn't understand what this item was on the agenda, I thought it was a good opportunity for me to present it to the public, that, you know, I think most people would prefer to, after you all discuss items that we're able to speak then, not wait to the end or guess what is going to be talked about before it happens.
When you say you don't understand this agenda item, do you mean the protocols that are listed in the...
I don't know what that meant. I thought maybe with the protocols that you were going to tell us that things change.
I think it's confusing. It looks like it's an agenda item, but it's really just clarifying what the protocols are for the public comment, period.
It's just trying to provide a more level of detail. You know, in response to your question, and I certainly can appreciate what you're saying, we post the agenda a week beforehand. Certainly, sometimes I get calls. People call me and say, can you explain this agenda item? Can I have a conversation? Or Mr. Sobrowski will, if it's financial in nature. In my experience, I am not familiar, in my nine years as a superintendent, of having public comment on an agenda that's been posted with all the items listed.
I'm not asking for all the items. I'm asking for the ones that are going to be voted on, that after all the discussions having...
I'm just trying to answer your question.
Right. I'm asking for a change. I don't think it's fair to the public. You cannot understand what these agenda items mean, and to talk before and after, and then they're voted on in between, just doesn't seem...if you really want to hear what the public has to say, I think it needs to be changed, the protocols.
Thank you.
May I ask a clarifying...oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say, you're correct, Adam. There has been no change. This has been the standard protocol for a long time standing, and thank you for your comment.
I just want to ask a clarifying question to Linda's. Is this a school code issue, or is this a Colonial School...I mean, it's been this way since I've been here, which is a very long time. Is it just our policy, or is it a general school code policy, or how are agendas formulated?
The Sunshine Act requires that you allow members of the public to speak before any votes will be taken on any of the action items. The discretion is given to the governing body whether to take it all at once in the beginning, which, as I think as Dr. Christian was pointing out, which is what many municipalities do, and it's certainly school districts which have a significant amount of number of items on their agenda for each meeting, or you can take it individually. And I'm not familiar with any school district that allows you to take it on every single agenda item. It's on all agenda items at the beginning of the meeting.
Thank you.
So what Mrs. Dahl is familiar with, because as serving on the White Marsh Township Board of Supervisors and having Ms. Dahl be a resident of White Marsh Township, the Board of Supervisors allows for comments after every single item. So the chair will always say, is there any public comment? Is there any board comment? And then they make a vote. So on everything that's being offered, now 90% of the things, there's no public comment, but it may be even 95%. But it does allow for there to be comments, and personally, I think it is the best thing to do. I don't know if it's something we can look to put at a future policy committee meeting, Jen. Maybe we put it on to talk about the processes and how we do it. We get our advice of our solicitor, or whatever it may be. But I do think it would be something that would be beneficial to the public to be able to have the opportunity to speak at those times. And maybe with more limits, not five minutes, you know, we could try to keep the meetings moving, but still allow the public to have an opportunity to speak. So I'd love to maybe have that on a future...
In fact, you know, feedback that I've received on our public comments is that we're very generous with time at five minutes with a two-minute follow-up. Many districts don't even allow that. So I think we have provided ample time, both in the beginning and the end, so...okay. Moving forward. Any other more public comment on the agenda? Staff report.
There's no report this month?
All right, moving forward. We got correspondence. And just a note on this, this was to Dr. Christian from Dr. Bogley. It was donation from the Outreach at the Hill at White Marsh. I'm pleased to inform you that the Outreachers, a philanthropic organization from the Hill at White Marsh, would like to donate $2,600 to Conshohocken Elementary. The funds will be utilized to support literacy initiatives and to provide enrichment activities at Conshohocken Elementary during the 2018-2019 school year. The Outreachers continue to be incredibly generous to the Conshohocken School community. Earlier this month, a third-grade student sang for the residents of the Hill at White Marsh. The event brought smiles to many, as we're very proud of how well our third-grade students performed. And that's from Dr. Bogley. And just on a personal note, my wife works at the Hill, and she said it was very well-received, and the kids did an outstanding job. So that was very nice. And they got to go to Legoland, from what I understand from some of these grants, which was a huge success. So thank you to the Outreachers at the Hill at White Marsh. We greatly appreciate it. All right.
Does that make a motion?
Oh, we need a motion to accept a donation. Can I make that as a motion? You have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Ayes, have it. All right, superintendent's report.
Thank you. The motion is to approve the personnel report and extracurricular appointments as outlined in Items 10B and 10C. Board action is requested. For the attached personnel changes, appointments for promotion, employment, or transfer are subject to the presentation of valid credentials, employment verification documentation, and state mandated requirements.
All right. Make a motion for approval? You have a second? All in favor, say aye. Ayes, ayes, have it. All right, moving forward into new business.
This is item A on the agenda. It's a motion to approve and adopt the 2018-2019 final budget totaling $126,66,500, which includes a real estate tax rate of 21.917 mils, an increase of 2.4%.
All right, we have a motion. Do I have a second? You have a second. Is there any discussion?
I was wondering if Mr. Sobrowski might be willing to speak a little bit about the budget and just as an update to our last meeting when it was presented, and just sort of give a brief overview of the, you know, just the process and what the budget looks like and how we got to these numbers.
Kind of a quick process, since I started in December. I've become familiar very quickly. We started out in April with some estimated wage and benefits, and we were looking at almost a $4 million deficit. Through some fine-tuning of our budgeting, meeting with our department heads and building principals, we were able to scale that down. We did use the system this year to project our salary increases and benefits for next year, which does include four new professional positions to handle the student enrollment growth that we're projecting. We are looking at some pretty significant increases with our Peasars' rate and also our health insurance, which we were able to offset by savings in other areas. So we are proposing a $126,66,500 spending plan, which is 1.82% over last year's budget. And it does include a 2.4% Act I index, but that doesn't help us to meet the budget. We are still proposing to use $724,516 of fund balance to balance this spending plan.
And even with the tax increase, we'd still have the third-lowest tax rate in the county. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And I know you've spoken about this before, but I'm just curious if you could let the public know about what percentage of our budget is discretionary versus fixed in terms of increases.
When you talk about the fixed cost, we do have contractual issues with all of our bargaining units, agreements with most, all of our personnel. The benefits are non-negotiable Peasars, which is the Pennsylvania School Employers Retirement System, mandates how much we have to contribute. That percentage this year is up to 33.43% for 2018. So that means for every dollar that we pay somebody, 33 cents has to go in, in addition to that, to fund their retirement. So those are fixed costs. We have our transportation contract, which we have one more year left, so that's a fixed cost. We have our debt service. That is set in stone pretty much based on the bond issues that we've issued over the last five years. So when you're talking about what we can really have control over, it's very small, Matt. It's probably less than 7% to 8% of the budget that we do have control over.
Okay. Mr. Sobrowski, can you talk a bit about what our remaining fund balance would be, since we had about 3/4 of a million we needed to use to balance the budget? What does our current fund balance look like, and how much of that is actually free for us to spend, you know, non-restricted money?
Right. Right. Our fund balance, you know, started out this year about $28 million. And with the transfer that I referred to when we had the public comment, we transferred $6 million over to the Capital Projects Fund to pay for the balance of the PW renovations. So we're looking at about $22, $23 million. We do have about 3.25 earmarked this year to balance the budget. I don't think we're going to need all that. So I do believe that we're going to have a little bit in excess of $20 million left in fund balance. Now that is unassigned, but it's also committed. The committed part is for the, what I had mentioned earlier, increase in PISers. PISers is still slated to increase to get over 35% within the next two years. There's really no end in sight, as far as, you know, the amount of percentage that we're going to have to contribute. We do have some debt service issues coming up. Another renovation possibly at the middle school. We have healthcare. We are in a consortium, but in effect self-insured. So we have to have a contingency for some, you know, catastrophic type of, of claims that may hit us. So all those reasons is a good reason why a school district needs those kind of fund balances to lean on, and not even to mention that, you know, this has been a very good year for the state legislators. Obviously, an election year, they're going to get the budget done before June 30th. But if you remember, two to three short years ago, it took them till, I think it was March or April, to pass their budget for that, for this year. And a lot of school districts had to rely on their fund balance. And if you didn't have a fund balance, you had to go out and borrow money. And that, that interest that those school districts paid on that borrowing were taxpayer dollars that were not budgeted. And that was caused by the legislator. So we are in, in good financial shape, and, but I do believe that we've been very fiscally responsible over the years, and it's there for a purpose. And it's probably a good thing to have, especially if we're going to be going out for another bond issue.
Well, thank you. And that's what Mr. Franz touched on earlier. I just wanted to make sure to give you an opportunity to sort of clarify the money that he thinks that we're, you know, sitting on. We're not really sitting on it. We're, you know, most of it's committed, or assigned, or whatever it may be. And the money that isn't committed or assigned is for those, those, you know.
And Ms. Producer, if I-
Unforeseen challenges.
If I could just ask Mr. Soblosky, just a follow-up question to your question about the fund balance. The state has guidelines for the unassigned fund balance, correct?
Correct.
And my understanding is, in the budget that has been proposed, that the ending unassigned fund balance would fall within the state guidelines.
Right. For a budget our size, we can only have 8% or less of fund balance unassigned. We are projecting that next year, we're going to be about 7.5% of unassigned fund balance at the end of the year.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Soblosky, can you also clarify? My understanding is also that a healthy fund balance also contributes to things like the fact that we have a AAA rating from Moody's having, and it will allow us to borrow money for future projects less expensively, because we're showing strong financial health. Is that correct?
That is correct. Having a AAA rating with a Moody's or a Standard and Poor's definitely helps to make our bonds more marketable. People that want our bonds are willing to accept a little less in interest, because they are safe, and they are guaranteed to have their, their return. So it is benefiting the school district by having that fund balance, which leads to the AAA bond rating.
All right. Excellent discussion. Any more?
Yeah, I mean, I just wanted to thank Mr. Soblosky and Dr. Christian for their hard work. You know, they're both new in the district, and they, you know, hit the ground running this year, really working hard to get the budget, I think, you know, to get this budget over the finish line, and to look at, you know, to look at the cost we could control without harming the educational program. And I think we all agree that the educational mission of the district is the most important thing. And just want to thank you for your, you know, constructive work. We do have a tax increase. I mean, none of us love the fact that there's a tax increase, but, you know, we've talked about the reasons for that, you know, with, with PISers, with increased enrollment, with potential renovations coming up. And so, you know, we're trying to be as fiscally responsible as we can, while also certainly delivering the quality of the education I think that people in the school district have, have come to expect. And so, thank you to Dr. Christian, thank you to Mr. Soblosky, and thank you to the other members of the board for being constructive and cooperative, working on the process over the course of the year, to, to make sure this budget gets put together and over the finish line.
May I ask a question, Mr. Soblosky, also? What is that, about what, how much is that per taxpayer, for, say, $100,000 assessed value? Do you have that number off the top of your head? What, we could be looking for average taxpayer?
With our, with our tax rate at, you know, 21.917, a property that would be assessed at $100,000, we'd get the tax bill July 1st of $2,191.70. The tax increase for this year of .513 for that same $100,000 house would be $51.30 more than the previous year.
Thank you. That's what I want everybody to understand.
It was 70 cents and then 71 cents?
So the, actually, increment is not as much, the increment, as it may sound, with a 2.4% increase.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right. Excellent discussion. Anybody else? All right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Eyes have it. All right, Adam, you got a busy night tonight.
The next item on the agenda under new business, Agenda Item B, is a motion to approve the 2018-2019 taxation rates, fees, and billing dates as presented.
All right, do we have a second? A second? Any questions? I don't know. We touched upon Leslie's comment just previously about that incremental increase per the $100,000 house assessed value. So, it's small, but it is, it is something, so.
Considerable, but not enormous.
Correct. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Eyes have it. All right, moving forward.
Agenda Item C, this is a motion to accept $3,218,028.57 in property tax relief, as provided by Special Session Act One of 2006, and to further establish the 2018 exclusion of $14,194 from each eligible homestead and farmstead within the Colonial School District, to produce a maximum tax reduction amount of $311.09.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second? A second? Any discussion?
Mr. Soblosky, could you just briefly explain what, what this agenda item is about?
Yes. If you remember way back in 2006, they passed what we now refer to as Act One. Act One put into place this, this statewide index, that school districts must, can only raise their taxes to the index. If they go over, it's either through the use of exceptions that are approved by the state, or by voter referendum. The sister bill of this, Act One of 2006, provided casino slot machine gambling in Pennsylvania, with the thought that the revenue collected by the state from the slot machines was going to provide some property tax relief. So, property ta, gambling came to Pennsylvania, and with it, the slot machines, but then a few years later, they expanded to table games. Table games do not generate any revenue towards property tax relief. So now, there's, there's people drawing money away from the slot machines. Well, the slot machines are still producing some, some payouts for the property tax relief, and our proportional share is $3.2 million. This is a revenue-neutral flow of income coming in. We get it in, in August and October. But that $3.2 million is then giving to all eligible homesteads and farmsteads by reducing the, the assessment on their property by $14,194. Now, if you take that $14,194 and multiply it by our new tax rate of 21.917, you'll come up with the $311. That $311 multiplied by all the homesteads and farmsteads in our community, will spend the whole 3.2, actually slightly above the 3.2. I think there's about a $100 difference. So we always try to give away more, because if you have less, then you have to carry it over. So, Act One, when they passed the law, very public relations, taxpayer-friendly, they made it a requirement that every school district has to pass an amendment, a motion to accept the money, and to also tell the taxpayers how much the property tax relief was going to be for the, for this, these tax bills issued July 1st. So this is that action.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Eyes have it. Moving forward. Eunice.
This is a motion that the board approve the amendment to the Declaration of Conservation and Open Space Covenants, Restrictions and Easement, by and among the Colonial School District, the Township of White Marsh, the County of Montgomery, and the White Marsh Foundation, for a property commonly known as Erdenheim Farm, owned by Erdenheim Farm SBLP, with an address of 5051 Flower Town Road, Lafayette Hill, Pennsylvania, and authorize the board president to execute said amendment.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Any discussion?
Can I just have someone explain this? What does this mean?
I'll do the best I can.
As far as the money we do receive or will not receive?
Actually, this has no impact on the district at all. As many of you will recall, about 10 years ago, Erdenheim Farm became open space, and it was taken off the tax rolls. Because of a development near Erdenheim Farm, which I believe now is called Creekside Commons, as part of the settlement where White Marsh Township allowed Creekside Commons, they were required to widen the road for some intersection and signal improvements. They needed to acquire some property from Erdenheim Farm. So since this small amount of property, which is deed-restricted and non-taxable, is being transferred to the township, which would also be a non-taxable, we need to execute this amendment as one of the taxing bodies. This will have absolutely no impact on the district at all.
Motion. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Eyes have it. Out-of-state student trips. Rosemary.
This year, Dr. Bakani asked for all trips that are known to be planned for the upcoming school year be entered into tonight's agenda. And so we start in August with the cheerleaders, cheerleaders, excuse me, go into a camp in Pine Forest in Olafon, PA. And that's, then we go all the way. There are 34 trips that are proposed to the Colonial Players going to see a Broadway play. The first trip was in August, the Broadway Play in May of 2019. These trips have all been approved by the superintendent and the principal, and have been reviewed by the board. And I make a motion to approve these 34 student trips.
Yeah, did she read the, the motion?
So, hold on for a second. Rosemary, would you just, the motion, can you read the motion to approve the tentative academic and athletic competitions? Can you read that statement as the motion?
I make a motion to approve the tentative academic and athletic competitions our Plymouth White Marsh High School students will participate in during the 2018-2019 school year, as listed in Mr. Ralph Brett's memo to Dr. Christian dated April 30th, 2018. These trips are out of state or require an overnight stay.
Thank you. You just made our solicitor very happy. We have a second on that?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Eyes have it. Eunice.
This is a motion to approve the proposed breakfast/lunch pricing schedules for the 2018-19 school year, as outlined in Mrs. Lori McCoy's memo to Dr. Christian dated May 29th, 2018. There is no increase in the prices for student meals.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Any questions or comments? All right. Here are none. Do I, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Eyes have it. Leslie.
This is a motion to approve a request for school psychologist Robin Fishbein, Caitlin Gilmartin, Kim McNamara, and Kristen Berstein to attend the National Association of School Psychologists Conference in Atlantic City from July 9th to 11th, 2018. That is a motion to approve their trip.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Eyes have it. Moving forward. Adam?
This is Item H. It's a motion to appoint Rudolph Clark LLC as solicitor for the Colonial School District for the period July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019, and to approve the HIPAA Business Associate Agreement between Colonial School District and Rudolph Clark LLC, as the result of Rudolph Clark LLP's, excuse me, handling cases that involve protected health information on behalf of the district. The fee schedule and scope of representation are outlined in Mr. Clark's letter to the Board of School Directors dated May 10th, 2018.
All right, I have a motion. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Any discussion?
I just have a question. Rosemary and I are sharing a mic. The scope of our representation shall be as follows, this is with regard to the retainer. Mr. Clark, I just want to make sure, where it says, "We will attend all meetings of the full board, and will periodically attend committee meetings when the need arises." Just confirming policy committee meetings, because the need arises, it seems, for every policy committee meeting. And I just, Mr. Remondo had confirmed with me, but I just do want to confirm with you that those are included in the retainer.
Clarify that, Mike. Those are included.
Thank you.
So that's no additional charge for contending the policy committee, and also the superintendent review?
Correct.
So there was no charge on that, because I know that question was brought up. All right. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Eyes have it. Leslie?
This is a motion to approve the special education services contracts for the 2018-2019 school year, as outlined below. We discuss this executive session. They're confidential, but the, the assignments are for approximately two dozen students, I believe, at various schools for special, special education. And they're on our agenda, and that is a motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, move forward. Jen?
Motion to approve new board policy 000 and 002, and accept changes to board policy 001, 003, 004, and 819, and 916, on a second-read basis. Delete board policy 004.1, 008, and 009. Approve new board policy 006.1, and accept changes to board policy 005, 006, 007, and 227, on a first-read basis.
All right, I have that as a motion. Is there a second? Any discussion?
Second.
Go ahead, Mel.
I know this seemed very lengthy at the time, but I just wanted to assure everyone that we did have very lengthy policy committee meetings, and went over all this material very carefully.
I would follow up with that, that it has been a very good discussion at the policy committees. Jen's doing an excellent job, leading these, this charge. You can see the list is starting to grow. We're getting, we're digging in and getting some work done, and the policy review, as, as we committed in the beginning. So it's good to see that they're, they're coming to second reads and first reads, and we're hitting the high priority ones. Dr. Christian has identified a couple of ones that we have to get done sooner than later, so it's good to see. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Eyes have it. All right. Calendar revision.
Item K, 2017-2018 calendar revision. I make a motion to amend the 2017-2018 instructional calendar to reflect June 15th, 2018, as the last day of school for students.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Eyes have it. Textbook approval. Leslie?
Yes. This is a motion to approve the administration's request for new textbooks, one for middle school science, and another for marine biology, at the Plymouth White Marsh High School. That is a motion.
A second?
Exact those two books.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, ayes have it. Contracted bus drivers, Eunice.
This is a motion to approve contracted bus drivers from First Student listed on the memo from Kathy Ellis, Director of Transportation, dated June 7th, 2018.
Do I have a second? Have a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, ayes have it. All right, Adam.
This is item N on the agenda. It's a motion to approve the 2018-2019 athletic supplies bids for both Plymouth White Marsh High School and Colonial Middle School.
Do I have a second? All right, we have a second. Any discussion? Here are none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, ayes have it. Oh, Eunice.
This is a motion to approve the purchase of one 24-passenger minibus and one 9-passenger van utilizing the Capital Reserve Fund.
Do I have a second? We have a second. Any discussion?
You know, I just want folks to know that we get a lot of use out of the, out of the vans that we're replacing. We got a lot of use out of them. I think there, we have one with 268,000 miles on it and one with 180,000 miles. So, you know, the, we're replacing some well-worn and well-used equipment.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, ayes have it. P, Adam.
This is a motion to approve the upgrade of the Plymouth White Marsh High School Fitness Center with an initial cost of $275,037.66 funded through the Capital Reserve Fund.
Have a motion and a second. We have a second. Any discussion?
Could some, could someone just briefly list sort of what, what the purpose of this is and what, what equipment we're buying, et cetera?
So, it's part of the whole high school renovation project, which includes the new gym and the fitness center. This will replace and fully, all the outdated equipment and it's all part of our health and PE curriculum. In addition, our athletic teams will benefit from it, but it's, you know, we can have Mr. Brett's out for a future meeting, perhaps maybe have a curriculum meeting down there. But it's been a long time in the offing and so our whole goal with this project is to finish everything at the high school for the September start of the 18-19 school year. So, it'll get all the cardio equipment, all the free weights, and all the other equipment that's used in health and PE plus electives plus our athletic teams and really finish off everything that the Board has tried to accomplish with the high school.
I just like that. It is a great space and with that new equipment, it's going to be state-of-the-art. Maybe we'll have a little ribbon-cutting ceremony when, when it's all finally completed. So, that'd be great. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, ayes have it. Adam.
Item Q on the agenda, this is a motion to approve the four-year leasing agreement with Edwards Business Systems to provide copiers and printers in all district buildings.
A second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? Very good to hear. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, ayes. A nay?
No.
Okay, you're an aye.
You're a aye.
A little slow on the hand raising, but we'll, we'll throw it in with the ayes. All righty. I know we're going almost through the whole alphabet here. This is a lengthy list. What happens when we get to Z?
Yeah.
Hopefully, we don't get that point. All right, moving forward. Chromebooks.
Agenda item R, this is a motion to approve the leasing agreement with Lenovo Financial Services to provide Chromebooks at Colonial Middle School and Plymouth White Marsh High School for a period of four years.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second? Do I have a second? Any discussion? Here are none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, ayes have it. All right. Sorry about that. Eunice.
This is a motion to accept PDE's approval of Plan Con H for Plymouth Elementary and Ridge Park Elementary renovations and authorize the district administration to move forward with the submission of Plan Con J for each project.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Second. Any discussion?
Could, Mr. Yem and Dr. Christian, could you just explain briefly what these pieces of the process are?
Sure. Plan Con H is the approval of the financial information for both projects for Plymouth Elementary and Ridge Park. That gives us the approval ability now to go ahead and file Part J, which starts the reimbursement process. So, we've been fully approved, so we, all we're doing is accepting their approval tonight and asking permission to move forward with Part J.
Great, thanks very much.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, ayes have it. Rosemary.
Item T, this is a new item, contract approval for substitute nursing staff. I make a motion to approve the agreement with General Healthcare Resources Incorporated for continued substitute nursing services.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, ayes have it. And you.
Item U, this is a motion to approve the agreement with Enroll LLC for the implementation of a benefits administration platform.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? Here are none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, ayes have it. And that completes a very lengthy new business. Put that to sleep. All right, Solicitors Report.
Nothing to report, Mr. Remondo.
Excellent. Committee reports. Leslie.
Yes, yes, I have. I haven't had one for a couple of months, though. Here goes. The Board of Directors of the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit met on May 23rd at their building in Norristown. A number of retirees, along with their families and colleagues, attended a special reception in their honor in the lobby of the building. After department directors introduced each retiree and spoke of his or her accomplishments, Board President Tom DiBello and Dr. George congratulated each individual and presented that person with an engraved clock. It was a lovely evening for all. The Board was pleased to approve a revised Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act grant from the county in the revised allocation of $848,669. The new budget reflects an increase of $2,565. These funds are for employment and skill development for eligible young adults in Montgomery County and the MCIU conducts programs to train, train these young people for the workforce. A Girl Scout troop, 7855 from Lower Marion School District, attended the Board meeting to present their service work of a bookcase and age-appropriate puzzles and books for the early intervention waiting room, as well as additional books, toys, and puzzles for our pre-K classrooms. The troop has been working on obtaining their bronze award, which required a service component, and this project was part of that effort. As usually occurs at the close of each school year, the MCIU enters into contracts to provide the Colonial School District, along with many other districts, with various services. So, our Board approved contracts for July 1st, 2018 until June 30th, 2019, to provide discovery education streaming, E-rate application services for purchasing, Power School Student Information System, Safari Montage web access, and the regional WAN services to CSD. And can you explain that, Drew, what that is? Is that a, is that a technology service? WAN? All right, I'll find out what that is. I thought that was a technology. These agreements range in cost from $5,000 to $25,000 for Colonial School District. And our next MCIU Board meeting will be held at the end of August, since we have a break in July. And that concludes our report. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Finance report.
No report.
Mel, Human Resources and Personnel.
Human Resources, no report. Tech School, I'll move right on.
Go right ahead.
Two very quick items. Mr. Seth Stram assumes the position of Director of the Tech School officially, and we all are expecting some creative, innovative ideas to expand the offerings at the Tech School. And the Board also approved the building of a greenhouse for our landscape program, which we think will greatly enhance the program. And that's it.
I would just add, I had the opportunity to attend the senior recognition night for the Tech School and it was, it was, it was a beautiful evening. Students from, you know, all the participating districts finishing up with amazing plans for their further education or moving into careers. And we had wonderful representation from Colonial School District in particular, but everyone there in the program was just fantastic and they deserve to be commended and they, we hosted that at Colonial Middle School, so.
Very nice. And we have the skills competitions from the, from the Tech School there, they're going to nationals, so they're doing some great stuff down there. Curriculum?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. No report this month. We had no meeting.
Facilities Management and Transportation.
Okay. Facilities Management Committee met last Monday. It was an extremely lengthy meeting, which is recorded in its entirety and there's a lot of amazing detail about everything that's going on, so I'm going to touch on the high points, but I encourage folks to take a look at the information from the presentation from the architects, as well as listen in if you weren't able to attend because there was an astonishing amount of information presented in a very short time. Briefly, we had an overview of the progress and construction at the high school and CES with respect to the electrical upgrades that are going on this summer. Mr. Yem, is there anything you want to add that people should know about?
With the electrical upgrade? Yeah, actually, we're ahead of schedule. The company BSI is our subcontractor. I think he finished most of his work today. He's got about one day left. He's about two weeks ahead of schedule. Everything's going great.
That's great. And I know that they're continuing to just go full steam ahead on the gym construction.
Yep. Yeah, they're not wasting any time. Really looks great. Get the opportunity.
So, we're still on schedule for
Yep.
Being ready for the next school year. There was also a discussion around simplified rental rates for our facilities use, and I know that's been simplified into three categories rather than seven, so it should be much simpler for the administration and people who want to use the facilities to determine how to use it. There was some discussion around all the plans for the logistics around the various graduation and move-up ceremonies, and I know, you know, that the grad, the high school graduation went extremely well. I think it went very well at CES and at the middle school as well.
It did. Yep, everything went fine.
We're issuing a request for proposals for construction management for the middle school project. Has that gone out at this point?
Going out tomorrow morning.
Okay, great. And that will be to manage that, that whole construction process. And then there was a very lengthy presentation by the architects around the options for the middle school, either renovation or new construction. And there were several options presented. One kind of retained the triangular format of the existing classrooms with a lot of other enhancements, but retained kind of the, the physical shapes as they are, along with additions for additional instructional space and gym space and cafeteria, library space. A second option that would reconfigure the building to have rectangular classrooms that would give people more of the squares and more of the daylight in their room that they might like, but might be a little bit funkier for teachers to have to configure for the kind of instruction that they do at the middle school. And again, the architects explained this in extensive detail, so I really encourage you to take a look at that and listen to it. And then the third option would be new construction on the same site, the same property that would go on while keeping kids in the middle school as it exists now, and then they would move once that construction was completed. The costs for the, the two renovation options were in the 60 to 61 million dollar range and the construction timeline was approximately two and a half years. The new construction option is 69 to 70 million dollars and a two, a slightly shorter process of two years because the, the phasing required to move kids in and out while you're still working on the building is, is less extensive. Is there anything anybody else would like to add about the kind of overall options?
We, since that meeting, we have contracted with Dewey Engineering Services and Construction Management to work with KCBA to validate those estimates. And at the July 11th FMT, we'll have, Terry and I will have a, and Dave will have a presentation. KCBA will be there as well. So, they, we are employing them, so they go into KCBA, work with their estimator, look at the design, so the Board can have all of the information and verify those numbers too, so we can make an educated decision moving forward. So, that'll, that'll take place on the 11th and then really should give us our direction moving forward with whether it's going to be a renovation or new.
Great. And I know that meetings will be ongoing with the township and, and other folks in the, the third party to make sure that the estimates and that what the options that are on the table are all viable and we have a solid understanding of what the costs and implications of each of those will be, correct?
Correct.
Great.
Can I ask a question with that? So, I wasn't here when all of the, I know you weren't either, Dr. Christian, when the, all of the estimates came in for the high school renovation. So, just wondering, and Mr. Zabloski, you weren't here as well, but Mr. Yem, you were here. I'm curious as these brilliant architects who can design all kinds of stuff and figure all kinds of things out, they're coming to us with estimates on what it's going to cost, but they're not doing the work. The contractors do the work. So, please educate me and the public of how this process works, how the architects can come up with this estimate, and then how we can be certain that contractors are going to come anywhere close to those estimates and how the advisor, the firm that we've hired to help, how does all of that mingle and combine, please?
We're going to need another meeting for that one. That's a lengthy question there, Kathy, but, go ahead, sorry. I'll let you take that one.
Architects do what they can to design the building, obviously, and get it to the point where it's ready for bid. Because that for public bid, and there's a lot of factors that weigh into that public bid. For instance, right now, where the construction industry is just book solid with work, so you're not going to get as many bidders, number one, and the, the bidders that you do get aren't going to be quite as hungry. But the cost of steel, for instance, I don't know if you've been reading in the papers, the cost of steel is going sky-high, cost of materials is going sky-high, so we're a little bit concerned about the timing. You know, you hit the, you hit the streets at the right time, you can get much better bids than other times.
Do the architects take that into consideration before they give us the estimate?
Yes, all of that's taken into consideration, and they work constantly with, with construction estimators in the industry to determine, you know, what the best costs are, what, what's out on the streets right now.
As, as a baseline, they have a dollar figure per square foot for new construction versus renovated construction. That's where they start. Then they talk about the total number of square feet. Certainly, they get into the weeds when you're talking about the level that's needed for mechanical and engineering with HVAC, then plumbing and electric, electrical, and they factor all that. That, when they say maybe $250 per square foot, $159 might be dedicated to the GC, $79 to plumbing, whatever, and so they delineate all of that. Mr. Yem is absolutely correct. The variables, and they do factor in a margin of error, plus or minus. So, tariffs on steel certainly have an impact. I can tell you that in our initial conversation with the representative from Dewey, he's already factoring in a little bit higher rate per square foot than what was probably paid a month or two ago, just based upon the trend in the industry. It would behoove the district, once we make a decision on whether renovation or new, and then the bid documents are fully developed, to go out and get another, and I think the Board did this with the high school, you went out and validated that number because you have the bid documents and you also are closer to the bid time. So, but Terry said the other parts about timing are all critical as well.
I would add to that, Kathy, that when we were considering the renovation at the high school, obviously, the architects came in with a plan and there's a lot of negotiations about, but we pretty much, as a Board, set a limit and said, "Here's the amount of money we're going to spend. You work within that limit."
We set a precise limit. I mean, literally not to go over. Terry put in the penny, so he could be under $40 million, not counting the gym.
It was a dollar.
I think it was truly amazing that, and of course, we didn't have all the variables we have now, but when we did the high school, the estimate came in almost. Terry, how much were we off?
Within $300,000 of a $36 million bid.
Right.
So, we used a company called Reynolds for that project.
Right.
And, yeah, they were right on target.
on target. We had to come in that close.
That was great, and we didn't have, have, you know, the huge variables that we're worried about now, obviously, with, with the market.
Well, there's, there's different approaches to moving forward on this. If we were to set a dollar limit, they'll design to a dollar, dollar limit, but with the increased enrollment, you know, our options are, are different. We have a different scenario right now, so we're, we're kind of have to take a different approach. That being said, right now...
But we still have to set a limit. I mean, we know what we can and, I mean, what we can and can't afford to spend, or we will hopefully know that by the time this happens.
So currently, with Dewey reviewing the proposed concept plans at this point, we're trying to develop confidence in, in the architect's number. I mean, that is, that is, we're at a decision point come July that we need to tell them to go with this direction or this direction.
Correct.
And this, and this exercise of having Dewey is going to give us not only the KCBA's in-house estimate, but we're taking an external view, so that, that data point's going to allow us to be confident. Now, at the end of the day, when the bids go out, that's really what the number's going to be, and that's, there is the risk of timing, materials, contractors availability, manpower availability, so they're the, they're the driving factors that we can't control at this point.
Yeah, but what, what we did when we did the high school was have a lot of variables, a lot of options, that if we were to go over a certain number, we would eliminate this or we would change this and go, so...
Yep. We do the same thing with this project.
Right.
Excellent. Any further discussion? Any, oh, any more on your report?
No, I think that covers it.
Covers it. Well, there's a lot going on with this, and I do encourage everybody to go to board docs. The complete proposals presented by KCBA is there. I encourage everybody to get familiar with them and, so that they be part of the process. All right. Next report?
CRSL, Safety and Wellness, no report.
We need to get a different name for that committee. That's a, that's kind of cumbersome. Legislative.
The members of the Montgomery County School Directors Legislative Committee met last evening at the MCIU. We discussed a number of issues. We got an update on the Pennsylvania, the PA budget for this year and how that will probably be passed on time. Some of the highlights that the budget will include are $100 million or 1.7% increase for basic education funding, increases in special education funding, and early education funding, as well as $40 million for the PA Smart Initiative, which is all around workforce development, and we've heard quite a bit about that, and so we'll see some dollars set aside for apprenticeship training and industry partnerships and more technical education, and that's a big initiative coming out, and we've had, we've heard a lot about that, both in our education plans throughout our curriculum, as well as the Tech School. There is no new funding for Plan Con, so that's something that people were waiting to hear about it, so exist, what was explained to us last night is that doesn't affect projects that have already been submitted, but new projects, so they imagine that moratorium will continue, and we're expecting then the, the school and, and health code bills will get approved next week, because they're racing to get everything done. A couple of other things that are important, there's a, a bill on the Keystone exams that will require, that was passed in the House, House Bill 85, which will require board, school boards to develop policy whether the parental opt-out on the Keystone exams will be extended to those opting out for philosophical and not just religious reasons. So that's something that, to keep an eye on. In addition, graduation requirements, and I just want to read the right bill, the Senate Education unanimously approved Senate Bill 1095, which adjusts the requirement that students pass the Keystone exams in literature, Algebra I, and biology to graduate. That was a requirement that was scheduled to become effective during the 1920 school year, and instead will create multiple pathways for students to demonstrate graduation readiness. And then there are some, also some bills coming out around Senate Bill 1181, which was approved out of the Education Committee, that will require mandated student health exams to include depression screenings, starting with students in sixth grade. And we had a lot of discussion on how that could practically be implemented. And, you know, the one wonderful benefit of attending those meetings is you learn a lot from your fellow school board members and realize how very, very fortunate we are here in Colonial with our very diverse tax base, and that we do not have some of the really difficult final, financial challenges that some of our neighboring school districts in the county do have. So we're very, very lucky in that way.
All right, very good. Municipal community liaisons. Rosemary?
Yes. Tuesday, July 3rd, will be the annual fireworks display hosted by the Borough of Conshohocken. The program's going to start around 5:30 PM at Sutcliffe Park. There'll be activities, food and music, bounce houses, a DJ, local community groups hosting concession stands, and the actual fireworks will begin around 9:45, and you can go to the Conshohocken Borough website to look at information about parking, especially handicap parking, which will be available in a certain area on a first-come, first-served basis.
All right, great to hear. It's always a big event in Conshohocken for the fireworks. Encourage everybody to go. Plymouth?
No report for Plymouth.
White Marsh?
No report for Plymouth.
All right, moving forward. Policy. I'm sorry. Yeah, policy.
Policy 227 is the Controlled Substance or Drug Policy, and it was created in 1974 and last revised in 1989, which is almost 30 years old. So there has been significant amount of discussion and analysis on this policy to ensure that it reflects current issues that students may face in Colonial School District, such as opioids and anabolic steroids.
All right. That completes our committee reports. We have, for your information, we have a technology report, the building reports, curriculum, instruction assessment report, school activity accounts, and athletic, athletic activity accounts. So I encourage everyone to take a look at them, and we're going into closing items and opportunity for public comments. All right, hear none. We'll move through that one quickly. All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.